Good evening and welcome to the Village of Westmont official village voting village board meeting for August 16th, 2010. I'd like to begin by having our clerk take the roll call, please.
Mayor Ron.
Here.
The clerks here, trustee Emery is absent tonight. Trustee Fleming.
Here.
Trustee Forsley.
Here.
Trustee Klebanow.
Here.
Trustee Scott.
Here.
Trustee Seneca.
Here.
Manager Searle.
Here.
Attorney Zemanek.
Here.
Police Chief Mulhern.
Here.
Fire Chief Trout.
Here.
Economic Development Director and Assistant Manager Kimball.
Here.
Public Works Director May. Human Resources Director Casey.
Yeah.
That's it. Okay. Thank you. Please join us in the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item are the minutes of the committee of the whole meeting held July 29th and board meeting held August 2nd, 2010. We have a motion.
So move, Seneca.
Second, Scott.
Discussion. Roll call.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Klebanow.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Forsley.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Reports. First thing I would like to do under reports is ask Sergeant Schlicker from the Westmont Police Department to come forward for a special presentation on the St. Jude Race to the Flag event.
Thank you. First, I'll give a little background on the Health and Wellness Committee that's working very hard monthly for the Village of Westmont and their efforts to encourage health and healthy well-being and good diet and nutrition and being as fit as they can for everyday activity for the employees of the Village of Westmont. The Health and Wellness Committee, back in January of this year, met, developed, and put together a plan to host our first 5K race. This 5K race was in hopes to raise money to present to St. Jude's Hospital for their long battle, everlasting battle that they do to support the families that are affected by cancer. Our goal this year was to have 250 participants for this race and to raise hopefully $500. I'm sorry, $5,000. The process was a lot more grueling than we had thought in the beginning, just because there were a lot of things that we had to tie in. We had monthly meetings that turned into bi-weekly meetings, getting all the planning together and getting the community involved and raising this money and soliciting the race to get the participants to come out. It all came together at the end, and it all came together by a huge effort by everybody that was involved. To start off with, I want to thank everybody that I work with on the committee, and that included our race chair, who is not here tonight, Mike Ramsey, works for the Water Department, who worked many, many hours of and beyond, you know, his normal daily duties at the Water Department, taking time away from his family, commitment to his family, spending weekends working and planning and getting the sponsorship forms out and soliciting the many donations that we did have at the end of this race. So, Mike, no, you're not here, but thank you very much. Next, Kathy Casey and Jill Peterson that work for the Village Hall. Everybody's got to come up with me. It's only fair.
Yeah.
Greg Pill for Oakbrook Racquetball Club. He again, come on up, Greg.
Come on up.
His many successes in hosting 5K races added to our success, just from all his knowledge that he was able to share with us. Kim Juuski for the Park District, and again, showing that this cooperative effort between, you know, the Police Department, the Water Department, the Village Hall, the Fire Department, the Park District, the businesses in this community, again, added to the success of this run. Nancy Tannehill, I'm going to have her come up. She would be our professional volunteer who did unbelievable efforts in raising over 30, I think it was 35 volunteers to help us out during this race, and some of those volunteers are out here in the crowd in these bright, bright shirts, so they could be seen in the day of the race if we did have bad weather, or for the vehicles, or for the runners to pick out as they are running the race to know where they needed to go. Also Larry McIntyre, who helped us with our development of our webpage, so we were out there on the web where people could go and sign up for the race and make their donations on the webpage. If I'm missing anybody, I apologize. As for donations and for sponsorships, I want to make sure I recognize, again, these sponsorships, because without them and without their support, we would not have had the success that we're here to do to present tonight to St. Jude's. So to start off, I'd first like to thank the Westmont Special Events Committee, who again brought us into their committee to add, to help solicit our race and get our name out there. Some of the other sponsorships included The Great American Bagel, Corner Bakery, Chipotle, Jim Danko State Farm Insurance, The Frame Makers, again Greg with Oakbrook Racquet Club, Good Deeds Girls Club, which was several girls from Manning School who, through their raising efforts of selling Girl Scout cookies this year, donated all their individual proceeds that they worked so hard for, they made all those donations to our race. Strube Celery and Produce, Westmont Fraternal Order Police Lot 63, the New Westmont Yard, Ray's Software Incorporated out of Naperville, Westmont Citizens Police Academy, Senator Kurt Billard, Uncle Bub's Barbecue, Fisher Chiropractic, Knights of Columbus. Again, we partnered really well with them. They were out there early morning with us, cooking up the grill and making eggs and bacon and sausage and serving juice, and by the end of the morning, Ron Gunther had all the eggs, sausage, and bacon made into one big bowl, and I don't know what we're going to call it, but it was a very good breakfast that everybody seemed to enjoy. Oakbrook Toyota, Kim Heller from Barton Warner, Frame Makers. Again, I'm sure I've excluded some, so if I have, I apologize, but there were many, many people who donated to the success of this race that went over really well. At the end of the day, with our goal being 250 racers and $5,000, we ended up raising $7,500, and we ended up having 307 people registered for the race with 249 who finished. I would like to think that the weather helped us out with that, considering we had about, probably about 40 percent of those numbers registered that morning. So though we weren't ready for that many people to show up that morning, it all worked out, and I think everybody came together really well as a team, and it was run very efficiently, everything was on time. And with that being said, and the way the route worked around Ty Warner Park, we looped through Oakbrook, I'm not Oakbrook, Oakwood subdivision. So I also have to put a special thank out to the Oakwood homeowners up in Oakwood for allowing us to come through their streets early morning. Hopefully, we didn't make too much noise, and hopefully, everybody was very fast running through the community, but a special thanks again to the Oakwood Homeowners Association. This year, we also, again, I want to recognition to Terry Barnich. Terry Barnich was a civilian that was serving in Iraq about a year prior to our race, who suffered fatal wounds in a car bomb that exploded, and we had recognition to his family and his fiancee, again, who are very close-knit to our community, and we did this race in memory of him, in memory of his life, in memory of the services he served the state of Illinois and to our wonderful country. So again, the race wasn't for memory of Terry Barnich. With that being said, I'd like to call up the mayor. If you could please come up, mayor, and I'd like to call up Representatives Josh and Susan from St. Jude's Hospital. And if I could, I would have the mayor.
The volunteers come up.
Yes, and the volunteers, please come up, too. I could be able to focus that.
He'll start focusing, I hope.
Let it auto-focus.
There we go.
Again, there's some of the sponsors that are on there. Again, mayor, I'll have you present this check, if you can, to Josh and Susan. Again.
Date, August 16th, 2010, paid to the order of St. Jude's Children's Hospital in the amount of $7,500. Race to the Flag 5K race. Congratulations.
I hope he doesn't take it.
Thank you.
Congratulations to all of you. Wonderful, wonderful job, and we're assuming that this is all going to happen again next year.
Yes, yes, I'm sorry. Yes, this 5K race will be planned for Sunday of Memorial Day weekend next year, 2011.
Thank you.
Yes. Yes, and Josh has a quick word to say, please. Great, Josh. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. I have a little plaque here, just to the Village of Westmont, and then also to the Race to the Flag Committee. I can't say thank you enough for all that you've done, again, to the village, to the committee, to all the volunteers, to the sponsors. Thank you so, so much. $7,500 is a phenomenal amount. It goes a very, very long way to helping the kids here in central Illinois and then also around the world. So, thank you very, very much for your efforts. Can't say thank you enough, so, thanks.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Once again, we couldn't do anything like this without all the wonderful volunteers that we have here in the Village of Westmont. Thank you. Thank you all. The next thing I'd like to mention or discuss is the possibility of reinstituting the Neighborhood Watch program. I don't know if any of the other trustees have received any calls, but we've had numerous instances of graffiti appearing in various parts of the community, and I've been contacted by one resident who would like to start the Neighborhood Watch program in her area, and I'm sure there are other areas of the village that would like to do this as well. I'd like to ask Tom Mulhern, our police chief, if he would come up and maybe give us an update on the Neighborhood Watch program and what we might do to get it started once again.
Thank you, mayor. The Neighborhood Watch program is a program that is actually facilitated by the Police Department. In other words, we will start the program up, but then it's turned over to the residents themselves to administer and go on again. One of the reasons why it has not been successful in our town, as it was many, many years ago, but most of the residents tend to, participation tends to slow down after a while. It's very good at the beginning, you have either monthly meetings or whatever, it's just the watch program for that area, for that block, for that area, it's supposed to be self-sufficient, and after a while, just interest tends to wane. We try to facilitate as much as we can, but it's up to the residents themselves to keep it going, because this is their neighborhood, their program. We will, any interest, anyone who wants to come and wants to start one up, we can really, we can give them guidance and help them facilitate it. However, you know, we can help advertise it and get the word out, but it's going to be up to them to sustain it afterwards. In the meantime, though, what I would like to ask our residents to do, and everyone, if they see anything happening, trustee Emery's talked about graffiti in the past, and it's something that we take a zero tolerance on. If you see someone with a spray can at like midnight or 10 o'clock at night walking down the street, it's obviously not someone that's going to be doing an arts and crafts project. We ask that you call us. If you see anything suspicious, anything out of the ordinary, definitely, please call us. We are your department, and we are here for you. I've always told people many a times, I'd rather have you call me 25 times and have it be nothing than the one time, so I don't want to bother the police, because I bothered them 25 times already, and have that be the time when help is actually needed. So, we need to help and look out for ourselves, look out for our neighbors. The best alarm system in the world is a nosy neighbor. You see something next door, they call it in, and we've caught more burglars and more crimes in progress that way. You see something, you know your neighborhood, you know exactly what should and should not be there, we ask you, call 911, or call the non-emergency number at 981-6300. A lot of people may see something, or may have information, or may have a crime tip, or something that they may want to tell us about, whether it be illegal activity, or just something that they see in their neighborhood. We have two ways that we ask our residents to contact us. We have an anonymous crime tip line, where you can call, and it's a recording, where you can leave the recording anonymously, or you can leave your information so we can contact you back, and that number is 630-981-6310. Again, that's answered by an answering machine, not by a live person, leaving information. One of our detectives will be giving you a call back after we review the information. The other way is by email, which seems to be a very good way for electronic communication lately, is Chief of Police, C-H-I-E-F-O-F-Police, all one word, chiefofpolice@westmont-il.gov. That not only comes to my desk, but it goes to Deputy Chief Gunther's desk, and is forwarded to our detective supervisor, Sergeant Michael Dale, and you will receive, I guarantee you will receive a personal response from me, as soon as I read the email, and then I assign it to an officer. In this case, where we've had a lot of problems, we assign a supervisor to a specific area for a problem. Recently, last year, we had a problem at Fedderens Park. We worked very closely with the Park Patrol, Park District Police, and I believe Sergeant Schlicker was the sergeant who was placed in charge of that operation to make sure that, not only did we address our problem, but continued, kept an eye on it. He's responsible for that. He's held accountable for that. So whenever we have other problems, what I've been doing is assigning a sergeant to address that problem and making sure that all the shifts, not just their own shift, but all the shifts are addressing that problem, and that way, I can have accountability and report back to the complainant or the person, letting them know what's going on. So in short, if you see something happening immediately, in light of, until we get the Neighborhood Watch up or in place of, just definitely, give us a call. I mean, don't ever be afraid to bother us, and we've get calls, "Well, I don't want to bother the police." Well, that's what we're here for. Give us something to do. If you see something that you just don't think is right, give us the opportunity to check it out. That's what we're here for. And then again, those are the two ways of contacting it. If anyone was interested in starting up a Neighborhood Watch program, again, you can call me direct. My direct office line is 630-981-6354. That goes right to my desk. Leave me a voicemail, and I'll call you back, or you can contact me at the Chief of Police email, and I will respond directly as well, and we will try to get that program up and running if there's enough interest in the area.
Very good. Thank you very much.
No problem.
Could we, by chance, maybe send a letter out to the various homeowners associations throughout the village and kind of alert them that we want this to start up, and that would pretty much cover the entire community?
We could, and then one other thing which I'm doing, too, and I'm in the process of trying to have more community meetings, meeting with the community groups, meeting with the homeowners association, and our residents ourselves, kind of like a town hall meeting, I want to start arranging for that, to learn what's going on, have more direct interaction like I'm doing here, but yes, homeowners associations would be a perfect opportunity, because they would be the ones to keep it going if they so choose. It's just been historically in the past, there has been no interest, or it starts up, and then after probably about six months, it just wanes. No one wants to go to meetings, no one wants to do much. The lesson to be learned by that, though, is, you know, be a nosy neighbor. You see something going on in your neighborhood, call. Let someone know. Just don't let it go unobserved. There's too many times where I'll go to a scene of a burglary, and someone says, "Well, I saw the guy walking through the backyard, but why didn't you call?" Well, I didn't want to bother you. You know, it doesn't matter, it takes 30 seconds to make a phone call. We ask that you call and let us know.
Thank you.
Thank you, mayor.
And the last thing I wanted to mention is to make note of the fact that there were some, I assume quite a number of people watching the Westmont Show last Thursday evening, and one of those people in particular was Janet Barnett, a Westmont resident, and she sent me an email, because I discussed that it's kind of difficult to buy a greeting card in downtown Westmont, so she gave me two places that she frequents with her children on a regular basis to purchase greeting cards, and the first one is the Moon Dragon, which is on Burlington, just west of the drugstore, and the second one is Tasty Treat, which is right next door to the Traveler's Restaurant in downtown Westmont. So if there are any others, please let me know. Thank you. Moving right along, our village clerk, Ginny Simsky, welcome back.
Thanks. I have nothing tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Our village attorney, Mr. Whiskers, John Zemanek.
Mayor, I've always had beard envy of your beard. I've got nothing tonight.
Thank you. Our village manager, Ron Searle.
Thank you. Just a couple of things, I wanted to request an executive session for personnel, and also wanted to mention that Wednesday evening, we're going to be doing the second mosquito spring in about a week and a half's worth of time. Many of you probably saw the article in the Tribune last week, we've had one of the largest outbreaks of nuisance mosquitoes that we've had for a number of years. We have also unfortunately detected the West Nile virus in some areas, so we felt it was important to try to do another spring in this short time period, so we're going to be doing that Wednesday evening. And the other thing I would mention about that is, as far as the West Nile virus is concerned, the best thing anyone can do is to try to use personal protection involving the chemical DEET. Make sure you buy a repellent that has at least 30 percent DEET and apply that whenever you go outside.
How do you spell that? D-E-T?
It's D-E-T.
Okay.
30 percent.
30 percent is what they recommend. I mean, any amount is decent, but 30 percent is your best protection.
Okay, thank you. New business, 29 East Chicago, I have an Board of Considered Ordinance approving an exception to the Village Sprinkler Ordinance. Oops, wait a minute. Sorry about that. We have one more very important presentation, and to my knowledge, only one of the individuals to be honored this evening is here. We have, what, five people that are retired recently from the village, and the only one that's here this evening, which I'd like to ask to step forward, is Mike Johnson, who is one of our building and electrical inspectors.
Which is in his retirement.
Knowing you, Mike, you'll always find something to do. I've never known you to sit around without anything to do, without enough to do. Congratulations. Let me read this if I might. "Westmont, the progressive village, which you've all noticed appeared on a repainting of our water tower here in downtown, incorporated in 1921. The Village of Westmont honors Mike Johnson, Building and Electrical Inspector, member of the Economic Development Department, 1999 to 2010. In recognition of over 10 years of dedicated service to the community, may retirement be enjoyable for you and filled with many, many happy years of pleasure. Presented in August 2010." Congratulations.
who was a deputy clerk in the clerk's office and worked for the village from 1994 to 2010. The next is Robert Zeiger, public work supervisor from 1977 to 2010. He had over 32 years of dedicated service to the Village of Westmont. And the next is Randy King, who we all know, and we're very sorry to see him retire. He worked in our Police Department and was the Deputy Chief of Police and member of the Police Department from 1980 to 2010, over 30 years of service. And the final individual is Steve Watson, who was our Building and Code official and also a member of our Economic Development Department, and he worked for the village from 1995 to 2010. So he had over 15 years of service to the village. And our congratulations to each and every one of the retirees. And I would ask if any of the board members have any additional comments they would like to add, please feel free to do so at this time.
We wish them all good luck in their retirement, and congratulations for retiring, and we appreciate the service that they did to the community.
Well said. Ditto.
Very good. Thank you very much. New business, 29 East Chicago, Board of Considered Ordinance approving an exception to the Village Sprinkler Ordinance for 29 East Chicago Avenue.
Motion approved, Scott.
Second, Seneca. Or for me.
Discussion.
I gave this a lot of thought, and I think, for me anyway, trustee Emery made some pretty compelling reasons on why this is something we should give great consideration to, so I'd sort of forgotten that, and I don't know how I could forget, that Naperville Road was pretty much out of business for a long, long time, and a lot of those businesses did suffer, so, and Chicago Avenue, so it kind of changed my thought on this. I just wanted to say that.
Any other comments?
I didn't get a chance to see that when I saw most of the board meeting, then I got distracted and didn't catch this one, this item. I guess the question goes back to what we said when we were discussing this, is it going to be safer with something like this in there? I think, you know, and if the answer is yes, I think, you know, we need to continue, you know, we need to look at that. It will have the fire alarm in there, the smoke detector and stuff like that, so is it going to be safer? Even though, you know, you put the wall in, will it make that place safer?
Well, if someone's in it, hopefully, it's safer than with no one in it.
That's the question that we've been talking about, and as much as we want the sprinkler, you know, that's what I'm looking at.
What we're looking at is the possibility of requiring businesses such as this to, we're going to be discussing this as an item?
Well, for...
At our next meeting?
If they have living quarters, that's going to be on the agenda for the next time.
So that would be the only exception?
The only question I would have on this is, and I mean, I've given it consideration too, is, I don't remember us asking him or whether or not what was presently there, and if allowing him to divide this space, that we were going to ask him to step up ahead of the deadline and see to it that those smoke and heats are installed in that building, if you're going to subdivide that space.
Well, right now, they're not in there. See, I thought they were, that's...
I honestly don't remember what the response to that question was, whether it was or wasn't.
So you're saying if he wants the variance, then he should go with the smoke and heat right away?
I guess what I'm saying is, if you're going to allow the exception to the sprinkler code to help them with this, then I think that he should take due consideration, or we should request that maybe the timetable is stepped up, that because he's dividing that space in half, that the smoke and the heats go into that building.
He has alarms, but it, he doesn't use...
Right, but it's not, it's not direct in.
It wasn't into Westmont, but I believe it was into another... No, it is monitored by a service. Is that, could we, is that what we're understanding that was correct? He is, he has a monitoring company that gets checked once a year?
Chief, I'm uncertain whether the building has a working alarm into the central fire station at this time, but I think, you know, the board would certainly be well within their rights to say, if we give you an exception to the sprinkler ordinance, we want a working fire alarm system in there now. Again, maybe just remind the village board, it's become customary to talk in terms of smoke heat detectors, but a working fire alarm system also includes pulse stations and horns, and we think that that fire, the working fire alarm system should be the order of the day, if we're going to trade that for the sprinkler requirement.
Any problems with that?
I would agree with that, and I think we're within our right to ask that this item be tabled until we have a chance to...
Well, I remember Daniel saying that he has an alarm system in there.
It's just not hooked up to the fire department.
It's not hooked up into our fire department is monitoring. What I'm saying is...
And we check it once a year, he said.
Okay, right.
And there's never been an issue with it.
Well, what I'm saying is, if we're going to allow the exception to this, granted, yes, by 2013, you have to have this in there, then if you're going to subdivide this space and put a separation wall in there, that's going to change the layout of that system somewhat.
And that's why I asked the question on Thursday night, I specifically asked Doug Daniels, and I believe the chief as well, if they would have more of a comfort level with this, if it were being monitored by us. And I got the sense that they were comfortable that it is just being monitored, at least for now, and that we do go in there twice, you know, we go in there once a year and we do check it. So I don't know where the chief stands on that, I don't, maybe I misinterpreted it.
What we'd like to see, and where everyone is, as far as all the business community, along with the multiple-family apartments and condos... along with the multiple family apartments and condos, they are all, should be direct connect to our dispatch center, and that's why we have this available with the radio system, rather than that of a telephone line. It's something that's coming through, and we almost completed the whole village at this time, so we'd like to make sure that they are hooked up, direct connect to our dispatch center.
So are you saying that you would have more of a comfort level with this, if that were the case? Because I didn't get that sense on Thursday night, I truly didn't. I kind of felt from Director Daniels that he was, that he felt okay, that as long as it was being monitored, and we do go in there and we check it, but if you feel that it should be, I mean, you're the expert, so if you feel, we're not the experts, you're the experts.
Doug and I are basically saying the same thing, that direct connect to our dispatch center, of course, if it's a system that is going to go to another dispatch center and then come back to us, it's just one more...
More step in the process.
More step in the process.
That's what they presently have now, is outside source of...
Well, I understand that, yeah, I, yeah, I know, we talked about that.
When it's an outside company monitoring it, and we do once a year checks, is there something on our system that we know fairly fast that it's not working? There is a system, like if they shut it off, or it's not working, there is an alarm or something that tells you? Okay.
Well, we have a, as long as it comes into us, and it's over the radio system, the new system that we're having all of our business community install at this time. Now, there were alarm systems out there that people would leave, or they would not pay their bill, they would come in, take the alarms out, and they would still operate until either we came in with an inspection or something like that. Or we show up and there's a fire, or we get a call from one of the citizens. So by having this hooked up directly to us, we would be aware of it immediately.
But would you be aware if it was faulty?
Oh, yes, yes.
Okay, so that, so it wouldn't be a matter of even once a year, they'd know right away. For the attorney then, can we subject this to, and give them time, like maybe within six months or a year that they have to have it?
Or by the end of the year, or something like that?
To give them time to finish their contract with the company they're with and start off with a new company, I would...
Yes.
There is a way we could do that, if the board feels comfortable on the...
Yeah, I'd be fine with that, make a contingent on it.
I mean, I'm just looking at it from a standpoint, if we're going to give the exception, and this is something we're going to put into play, and allow them to go ahead and make the changes in this building, yeah, we'll give them a time period to do it, but I think they need to step up their time to put this new system into place.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I think we're all pretty much in agreement with that.
And we're talking about just an alarm system that's directly connected to...
The smoke and heats attached directly into our monitoring system.
With pull stations and horns.
Yep.
Yeah, which is probably even more important than a smoke heat, I mean, we have those in our houses doing it.
And he is going to have to do some work, because if he's taking one unit and making it two, he's got to make sure he's got some more pull stations in there, so he's going to have to do some fixing up anyway on it.
Right. So I guess, I don't know, I think a reasonable recommendation would be to, if it's approved, contingent on this being taken care of within six months. I think six months is reasonable, if...
But the only reason I said a year is because they might have had a fresh new contract with another company.
Oh, I see what you're saying, yeah, that makes sense.
We prefer six months, that's why, but we'll give them a leeway, six months, two years, so they can finish a contract.
Yeah, that's good, I could live with that.
Is John's trying to figure out how to word this in there?
No, I'm not worried about that as much as if a year comes and goes, they've subdivided it, they've got a tenant in there, and they say, we don't have money, we're not going to install it. What's the remedy for the village then?
What is our remedy? Fines?
Uh...
Well, what would they do if they weren't hooked up to the other alarm company?
Then you're not going to get any feed whatsoever, and if they're hooked into another system, just say it's XYZ system, and then that company has to in turn put the call into us. If for some reason that system goes down, that's feeding into them, doesn't necessarily mean that our fire department's even going to know that that system's down, because they're, on the other side, we had the same thing where I used to work, was if our system was down, you would call into your carrier, they would put it on basically ignore until the system was back up, but dealing with the Aurora Fire Department, they never had any knowledge that that system was down at all. I mean, the monitoring company never called and bothered to tell them that it was down for service, or down for problems, or anything. So now, I mean, I don't know, you know, what company has it monitors it, or if they're all the same, I mean, I can only use that as an example, that...
Could we refuse to give them another business license until they get the...
Yeah, I mean, as I think about it, there are remedies, first of all, I think we should get an acknowledgement in writing from the owner that he agrees to do this within the time period, and if he doesn't, he's subject to, you know, a daily fine up to the maximum amount allowed by our code, or, you know, injunctive relief to force him to install this, and he'll sign off on that to bring it to a court, and a judge will enforce that. That's probably the best you can do. And then beyond that, yeah, could you withhold occupancy in the future? Yes. Could you punish an existing tenant who's in there in good faith, who's, hasn't done anything wrong, when it's the owner's responsibility? Probably not, that may be going too far.
Why don't you make your sunset six months from the end, or the end of the present contract that he has with the monitoring company now?
What if he's got a five-year contract?
Yeah.
He's out of luck, because he's going to have to bust it in three years anyway.
Yeah, I...
Most of those, most of those companies are usually a yearly situation anyway.
Well, some are quarterly, some are just month-to-month even.
Yeah, I mean, that's why I say, I mean, I think, I think maybe if you put that caveat onto it, and say, you know, six months from the expiration date of your...
But in no event greater than twelve months.
Correct.
So if he has a five-year contract, he's going to have to break it.
Right.
Can he, can we require that they must present us with a copy of their contract, so we have proof that they're monitored?
I mean, that would be part of the requirement, as far as the agreement goes, right?
We're giving them the variance on the other end of it, they're something he's got to do.
We're giving him the exception on the sprinklers, I think that's a fair treat.
Yeah.
Great. Okay. You know, the other option is to, you know, if he doesn't do this, is we force him to install the sprinklers.
True.
Yeah.
All right.
Sounds good.
Do we have to amend that, then?
Yeah, I, yes. We should probably have a separate motion on that. It would be a motion to amend the ordinance to include a provision requiring a smoke heat fire alarm system with pull stations and horns, directly connected to the Westmont Fire Department, to be installed by the owner within six months of the expiration of his current contract, but in no event later than twelve months.
That's good, so move, Seneca.
Second, Fleming.
Discussion? Roll call.
This is on the amendment?
Yes.
Okay, that was Sue Fleming. Trustee Seneca?
Yes.
Trustee Klebina?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Forsley?
Yes.
Trustee Klebina?
Yes.
Next item, sixty-five oh one, South Richmond, Board to Consider An Ordnance Approving An Annexation Request To Incorporate The Subject Lot Into The Village Of Westmont.
Motion to approve, Fleming.
Second, Scott.
Discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Forsley?
Yes.
Trustee Seneca?
Yes.
Trustee Klebina?
Yes.
Twenty-one North Cass, Board to Consider An Ordnance Approving A Development Request To Establish A Used Bookstore And Gift Shop In The Property Of Twenty-One North Cass.
Motion to approve, Klebina.
Second, Scott.
Discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Klebina?
Yes.
Trustee Seneca?
Yes.
Trustee Forsley?
Yes.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Seneca?
Yes.
Next item, three-twenty-four, North Richmond, Board To Consider An Ordnance Approving A Zoning Code Variance To Permit Construction Of An Addition Which Will Encroach Into Required Front Yard Setback.
Motion approved, Scott. Second, Fleming.
Discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Forsley?
Yes.
Trustee Seneca?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Klebina?
Yes.
B, Land Development Code Variance. Motion on B.
Motion approved, Scott. Second, Fleming.
Discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Forsley?
Yes.
Trustee Seneca?
Yes.
Trustee Klebina?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Klebina?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Seneca?
Yes.
Trustee Klebina?
Yes.
Point D.
Motion to approve, Seneca.
Second, Forsley.
Discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Seneca?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Forsley?
Yes.
Trustee Seneca?
Yes.
Trustee Klebina?
Yes.
B, Land Development Code Variance. Motion on B.
Motion approved, Scott.
Second, Forsley.
Discussion? Roll call. On the question for point A? Roll call.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Forsley?
Yes.
Trustee Seneca?
Yes.
Trustee Klebina?
Yes.
B, Land Development Code Variance. Motion on B.
Motion approved, Scott.
Second, Forsley.
Discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Forsley?
Yes.
Trustee Seneca?
Yes.
Trustee Klebina?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Point C.
Motion approved, Scott. Second, Fleming.
Discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Seneca?
Yes.
Trustee Forsley?
Yes.
Trustee Klebina?
Yes.
Point D.
Motion to approve, Seneca.
Second, Forsley.
Discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Seneca?
Yes.
Trustee Forsley?
Yes.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Klebina?
Yes.
Next item, Temporary Lifting Of A Hiring Freeze, Board To Consider Motion To Temporary Lift The Hiring Freeze To Permit The Hiring Of A, One School Crossing Guard And B, Two Substitute Crossing Guards.
Motion to approve, Klebina.
Second, Scott.
Discussion? Point A.
Can they go together, or do they have to be separate?
You can do them together, or, yeah, do it as one motion.
Can we do it as one, so...
If you want to break it up into two, you can, but...
Okay, we'll do it as, do it as one motion.
Motion to approve A and B then.
Motion is to, is for both point A and B. We have a motion and a second?
Mm-hmm.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Klebina?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Seneca?
Yes.
Trustee Forsley?
Yes.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Proclamation, Board To Consider Motion Approving A Proclamation Declaring The Week
Of September fifth through eleventh, two thousand and ten, Is National Payroll Week.
So move, Forsley? Second, Scott.
Discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Forsley?
Yes.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Klebina?
Yes.
Trustee Seneca?
Yes.
Girl Scouts, Board To Consider Motion To Permit The Following Requests From The Girl Scouts Of Greater Chicago And Northwest Indiana, A, Conduct A Fall Product Program, B, Conduct Door-to-Door Cookie Sales, and C, Conduct Annual Booth Cookie Sales.
Motion to approve as a block, Seneca.
Second, Forsley.
Discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Seneca?
Yes.
Trustee Klebina?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Forsley?
Yes.
Trustee Klebina?
Yes.
ETSB, Board To Consider Motion To Permit The Village Manager The Ability To Sign A Non-Binding Letter Of Intent In The Event The Manager Finds The Conditions Favorable After Receipt Of Further Information.
Motion approved, Scott. Second, Fleming.
Discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Seneca?
Yes.
Trustee Forsley?
Yes.
Trustee Klebina?
Yes.
Lions Club Solicitation, Board To Consider Motion Authorizing Issuance Of A Solicitation Permit To The Westmont Lions Club. Number one, Retroactively For Fundraising Activities At The Westmont Community Train Station, except the platform area on Friday, August thirteenth, four to six P.M. And two, Fundraising Activities At The Westmont Community Train Station, except the platform area Monday, August twenty-third, between seven A.M. and eight-thirty A.M. Motion on both items.
Motion to approve one and two, Scott.
Second, Klebina.
Discussion?
Just to say thank you to Kerry K. Mack for turning this around and helping the Lions and Heartland get this on for tonight.
Any other comments? Roll call.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Forsley?
Yes.
Trustee Seneca?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Klebina?
Yes.